Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting to order for Thursday, June the fifth, two thousand twenty-five special board meeting. Welcome everybody here that's made it to the courtroom and anybody that's online. Glad to see everybody here. Um, Dr. Leslie, I think you have a few comments you'd like to make.
I do. Good evening. Thank you for letting me make a comment before you got started. I just wanted to address the expenditures and revenue that are posted. We did discover an error. Clearly, we do not have more revenue than we do expenditures. When these data were submitted, they were dated, they were submitted for Fund One. This is the same way they were submitted last year. They do not include the Fund Three federal expenses, and that's why it appears that we have more revenue than we do expenses. But if you actually added our federal expenses in, which we have laid out, it would not be over. So I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that before we got started. I did want to just make another very brief comment, and that is that when I prepared the twenty-six budget, I did build on the pre-existing budget that was presented in November and December of twenty-four for this year. And I did hear you loud and clearly on May twenty-first when I came in, and I want you to let you know that I have done a first pass of the budget. And without modifying any employee compensation, I've already managed to shave seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars from that amount. So I will, you know, excited to hear the comments and I have a lot prepared. I've been working on several versions of the budget.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the public hearing on the, uh, on school budget. Tedlock, you want?
Yes, sir. First public hearing is the Northumberland County School Board Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Budget. As submitted by the School Division reflects an increase of one million, two hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars in additional county funding. As just noted, the revenue estimates is totaling twenty-three million, five hundred thirty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars. And the expenditure estimates is twenty-two million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
All right, Mr. Tedlock, thank you. Any board members having any comments or questions for Mr. Tedlock for open public hearing? All right, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone on the sign-up sheet here, but who would like to speak? Come on up and state your name, your address, and you're welcome to speak. Anyone like to speak on it, on the proposed school budget?
Jason Smart, I live in Heathville, and it's seventy-four Driftwood Court. And I, uh, I do appreciate the, it looks like there's a lot more information being given here now. And in terms of, you know, the breakdown of what's being requested. However, I will say, uh, there's one particular line item on the, um, on the slides that were provided. The line item for executive administrative services. That seems to account for the vast majority of the additional, the nineteen percent, uh, extra that's being requested. And, um, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that looks like, it looks like a fifty-three percent increase. And, um, I would say that, you know, the taxpayers of this county do not support that. Uh, I certainly don't, and everyone I've talked with does not also. So I would say, you know, by keeping that line item pretty much the same as it was last year, you should be able to keep the overall budget, uh, from going up too much over what it was last year. It seems like that, that one line item is pretty much responsible, so. Anyway, I just wanted to say we don't support that additional, that fifty-three percent increase in executive administrative costs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak?
Could I ask a question before we have a?
Yes, you certainly can.
Could the, with the superintendent mind speaking to what that increase was specifically?
Absolutely, so, um, I'm sorry, I'm down to.
Um, so that particular line item has to do with a payout for a former employee and one of the contingencies of the contract.
That's you.
Taxpayer should not have a pay or states.
That shit, huh?
You, you.
You're talking, you're talking about Joe Smallbrute. There's over thirteen thousand people in this county. You can't, you're not speaking for them, honestly.
Absolutely.
No, you, you're speaking for yourself.
No, if you want to do it, no.
No, for y'all. It's a whole lot of people in the county too, all right?
All right. All right, let's, let's get this back to order. All right, Dr. Leslie, thank you for the comment. Thank you for your comment.
Dr. Karen Pika, for those of you that don't know me, and, um, I talk to a lot of people in this county. I can't say I speak for all thirteen thousand of them. But there's a majority of taxpayers in this county, and Mr. Smart is exactly right. You do not have to increase that administration budget by that amount to still pay out that person. The county voted, the Board of Supervisors and the School Board voted in April to hire a manager for the county finances writ large. We're now June fifth. That vote has not been acted upon. If you bring on either a contractor or an employee to the tune of a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, you would still save over two hundred and forty thousand dollars in that line item alone. There's three hundred sixty thousand dollars in that administrative category for managing the finances at the school. Mr. Brand, you asked this a little bit ago. Mr. Williams, you asked the same thing. We do not need duplicate financial management in both places. We desperately need somebody with financial expertise. If you would have had that person in place last year, that eight hundred and eighty thousand mistake at the school would not have been made. We need somebody with financial expertise. You do not have to add a penny to that school budget. Matter of fact, you would save an additional, one hundred fifty minus three sixty, somebody else do math? You do not have to add money into that category to do that payout. You can still subtract money if you bring on board somebody to manage the county finances, and you have to do it quickly. The county funding, I'll save multiple comments for the county budget, but you do not have to increase the school budget by that. And frankly, I'm disappointed in the School Board. They gave themselves another five thousand dollars for travel, and they still didn't put more money in the tags program. It only cost thirty-four hundred dollars to put more money into the tags program that was taken out last year. But some members of the School Board, one of whom is the president, said they wanted additional five thousand dollars so they could travel, even though they didn't provide themselves with conferences. That budget can be cut some more.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, we have anybody that's online tonight like to speak? Would anyone that's online tonight like to speak about the, about the proposed school budget? Go ahead. I go ahead one more time. Anyone that's online tonight like to speak about the proposed school budget? All right, so if someone else wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, I know we need work sessions on this. So we'll have to be setting some dates here tonight for work sessions on it. All right, y'all ready for the next one? No. 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 Comments? Yes. This has gone on long enough. And a lot of people upset. And what's happened is, uh, it's gonna have a major impact on this county and every person in this county. Not just the kids, not just the teachers, the school system, every person in this county. And we have meetings with the School Board. We're supposed to have things in place of getting things in place, um, to take over the finances. And I'm gonna tell you quite frankly, you know, I don't know if everybody's on board with it or not. But I'm on board with it, and I'm gonna continue to fight that battle. We need that person here in the county to take over these finances and to help the school system. July one was the target date. It don't look like it's gonna happen, so we're gonna have a plan B, and hopefully we can get someone in from one of these companies to stay in and take it over until we find somebody. Roadblocks, procrastination. I'm done with it. We need to get in another gear and make things happen. It's time for accountability of the finances and the people. And it's, it's just ridiculous the time that it's taken to get some of this stuff done. A hundred percent correct. Yes, you are. Very difficult to get a meeting set. It's always some excuse. And we can't have that. When we set a meeting date, you make it or you don't make it. And that's how it's gonna be. That's the way it's gonna have to be. You can't make it, maybe you can make the next one. But you're gonna have to make the meetings whenever the date and time is set. Gentlemen, any other comments?
I've got another question. It's slightly off topic, but Mr. Brand's comments brought me to it. And I'd like to get an answer from the School Board as to what was done in last night's meeting. Not in closed session, I'm not asking you for that, but when you came back out into public, I'm not sure I understood what those comments were. Could I ask somebody to come to the mic to?
Ask anybody you wanna come.
Anybody that would like to come.
Chip Fireway, what was the question?
What did you guys do last night? What were the comments that were made when you came out of closed session last night?
As part of state statute for the termination of Dr. Worgo, there was two parts. It was three votes or more to, uh, to terminate her. But the second part of the statute was that clause that we read last night. It has to be made public that, um, Dr. Worgo had a contract, and that contract has to be paid out due to the terms of the contract. So that's why that section was read last night.
I guess the, the basis of the question is then she was terminated by a three-two vote by the School Board on May the?
Eighth.
Eighth? Was she paid up until last night? Is she still being paid? When does her contract officially end?
It ended yesterday, um, when they, uh, read that in the public notice. So basically, she was paid for four weeks.
Well, then the next question is, why did it take so long? If, if you guys voted to terminate her contract, why should, why should anyone still be paid for almost a month after their contract was voted to be terminated?
I can.
According to the salary that that position was being paid, and if that person stayed on for another month with benefits, I would say we flushed twenty thousand dollars of county money down the drain.
A little bit more.
I, um, I can only speak on what I know. Um, I found on the twenty-first of May that that clause had to be read. On the twenty-third of May, I sent an email to the School Board members expressing my, um, desire to immediately resolve the problem. Three meetings took place before that problem actually got resolved. I also sent an email on the twenty-eighth, um, further, um, expressing my disappointment that the meetings haven't been taking place. Um, to answer your question, I would have to refer that to the Chair and the Vice Chair.
That's all I've got.
Kinda looks like it was kinda just put off where it sounds. Put off just, just to give a.
I sent an email with the forty-eight hours of finding out about.
Another paycheck. That is not filed to the taxpayer. Taxpayers put up with enough.
I believe that.
In the past few years.
I believe that was also in my email.
Okay, all right. Ones that held it up should be responsible for the salary. All right, anyone else have any comments?
Can I ask the Board a question?
Yes, sir.
If it's okay. We are currently, the School Board is currently, um, negotiating Dr. Leslie's contract uh, for superintendent has to be done, um, by June thirtieth. Um, so she can take over on July first contractually. Um, that's what the state statute says for superintendent's contract. I would like, sure, I'm sorry. So, um, I would like to offer or ask the Board of Supervisors if they would like to render any input to the School Board that the School Board consider. I think it's important and transparency that the School Board and the Board of Supervisors work together. And, um, I would just like to put it out there and ask if the Board has any input that they would like, not specific numbers, because we're not allowed to talk about that, but any input that any member of the Board of Supervisors would like to make regarding that.
Well, this is two different boards. We don't usually get involved into into any salary numbers or any other things or any benefits, anything like that, that you may want to put into a contract.
I understand that. I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking for general input from the Board.
But, uh, I do think once you give her the contract, we're gonna have a very good superintendent. I got one request. And that is that the School Board give her one hundred percent support and help her get these finances straight. I think it's been a lot of hard work that's, that's going on by, by a few people over in that office to try to get some of this straight. But it's, it's still a ways to go. But she's gonna need all of the support from every School Board member. Not just two or three. All five need to support their superintendent to make sure she has what she needs to get these finances right.
I agree.
Along with the rest of the finance staff.
I, um, I would echo, um, some people's comments here tonight, um, regarding the finances and getting somebody else on board. I believe the vote was ten to zero.
That's right.
On that, um, and I don't believe that has changed, so, um, I personally would echo that, um, we need to move forward as fast as we can possibly while doing it correctly. So that's all I have on that. Does anybody else have any comment for me?
My two cents are that that salary needs to be aligned with that same position in the area, number one. It also needs to be a number that the school's budget can tolerate. But I, and I think that the School Board should consider what Dr. Leslie has done over the past five months. She served as as a, as the, with the title of Assistant Superintendent, she served as a superintendent for five months while the other superintendent was out. She served as Financial Director for a short period. All that needs to go into what you guys come up with.
And I would say that she's still serving as the Finance Director. She's overseeing that. The budget is very time-consuming. As Dr. Leslie said, stated earlier, I believe she, um, um, has worked the budget multiple ways, um, to ensure that we're gonna produce something that is accurate and that we actually need. And we need to operate within that budget, period. I'm a taxpayer here too.
Yeah, we, we all are taxpayers, and it's all affecting all of us.
Once this is cleared up and her title is written in stone, so to speak, are you gonna be immediately seeking to locate a Assistant Superintendent?
Actually, do you wanna make, do you wanna make? Acting Assistant Superintendent.
And I can't even do that. This demand action.
So, Ms. Ashton, you're a graduate from Northumberland High School, correct? Got Northumberland education done well, didn't it?
I do want everybody to realize too that I know there's been a lot of closed sessions with the School Board, and these are the things that we've been discussing and trying to get straight, because we're trying to move forward. And once Dr. Leslie was made the Superintendent, we've gone full force now to try to get everything in place and try to get things set up properly so that we can move forward in the right manner, so that we're not dealing with any of these issues at this time next year. So, um, I apologize to the citizens if, um, if there's a lot of meetings going on in closed session. But we are proactively moving forward, um, as a School Board in support of Dr. Leslie and now our Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Dr. Leslie, did you say that you had other versions of the budget that you were prepared to give us, or is?
Hearing aid, hello?
Okay.
My hearing getting cut out. I apologize.
No problem. Did you say that you had different variations of the budget that you?
Have so.
When will we?
Uh, I can absolutely share those, so that I put a large amount off the top. Um, and sending these, um, for employees, I would shake out, so I did three additional versions off the top.
I just wanna say, though, that's four versions that she's put forward and worked on in three weeks. I mean, she's really valuable asset. The way she approaches and solves problems, it's unbelievable. I applaud you.
All right, thank you. All right, y'all ready for the next one, or you got any other comments? I'm done for now. All right, second public hearing is on the Northumberland County School Budget. Tedlock?
The next public hearing?
Not school budget, Northumberland County budget.
Yes, sir. The, uh, next public hearing is on the Northumberland County Fiscal Year Twenty-Six County Budget. The Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Budget is in the amount of forty-nine million, one hundred thirty thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars. This proposed budget does reflect an eight cent increase in the current real estate tax rate, and it also reflects the vehicle personal property going back to the forty percent, uh, assessed ratio, which was, uh, currently set at thirty-five percent. As always, there will be no action taken by the Board of Supervisors tonight as, uh, they do have to have a seven-day waiting period, uh, by the Code of Virginia.
All right, any board members have any comments or questions for open public hearing? The, the eight cent is, what is that based on now?
That is based on the, the current requests that have been built into the, the budget.
So to fulfill all the requests?
Correct. As, as submitted.
From?
From the department.
From all the departments in the school system?
Correct.
Okay. And, and with that eight cents, you would still have to, well, it's nothing coming into the contingency fund to balance it.
No, I believe that would still require some, uh, dipping into the contingency fund.
It would.
It would.
Any estimated amount?
I can get that for you.
Does that include any salary raises?
That, not for the county. No, sir. It does not include any salary increases or bonuses.
All right, any other questions or comments for open public hearing?
That number also doesn't include, uh, cuts that other departments have made since you've met with them, is that right?
That does not include those, those cuts. That's correct.
All right. Law? Anything? All right. All right, I'll open the public hearing, um, Northumberland County Budget. First person we have to speak is Sheriff Beecham. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. I encourage this Board to rethink your stance on no raises for public safety. The men and women, the deputies, dispatchers, and support staff work tirelessly, day and night, to help protect this county. The sacrifices they make should always come into play when you're working on a budget. Now, I know you'll agree with what I just said. I, I know, I've known each of you for a long time. But what I need you to agree on is to invest in public safety. Please do not leave us behind. It's difficult to recruit and retain people to do this line of work. No raises, raises means we will fall well short of being competitive with our regional law enforcement partners. As sheriff, I think I have a good record of coming in here and only asking for things I need. I absolutely need to keep my manpower. I ask a lot of my employees, and they give every ounce they can. They're already worth more than what we can pay them. If we do not get raises, I'm feel fearful of those ones who are on the edge of leaving will, and why shouldn't they? If that happens, services and therefore county residents may suffer. I've heard raises cannot be given. In fact, they can, and they should. Why should my employees suffer? The Sheriff's Office had nothing to do with the county's downfall, financial downfall. The situation is not a local, state, or national economic recession. That I can understand. Why am I going to take a large and maybe the largest hit in my FY twenty-six budget request than any other department? It's not my fault. The Compensation Board reimburses the county for nineteen positions at the Sheriff's Office. For FY twenty-six, that would be one million dollars in reimbursement. Please fund the raises, raises originally in my fiscal year twenty-six budget request. Thank you.
All right, next person is Deborah Whaley.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
My name is Deborah Whaley, and I live at thirty-two fourteen Remo Road, Heathville, Virginia. And I come before you this evening as a concerned citizen about the financial stability of the county. Being a CPA and a former finance director for Westmoreland County for over six years, I'm very familiar with the budget process. It can be very difficult and tedious at times, and I know that very well. What concerns me from a financial standpoint is the steep decrease in the unrestricted fund balance from fiscal year twenty-two forty-four to the current proposed budget. Per the twenty-four audit, the unassigned fund balance was approximately seven million or nineteen percent of the total general fund expenditures. Fifteen percent or more supports a sound financial condition, providing financial security should there be unforeseen events. Based on the proposed twenty-six budget, the undesignated general fund balance will be three point eight percent. In addition to not having a sufficient reserve to meet unforeseen circumstances, it can also affect the county's ability to borrow funds and could cause an increase in interest rates. I reviewed the, uh, current proposed budget. and I know that some of the items have been adjusted from the prior year. But what also concerns me is that for the FY Twenty-Twenty-Five Budget, there was a shortfall of two point seven million before dipping into the unrestricted fund balance. Making reductions in the bus, budget expenditures is never easy, but at times it is necessary, and that is one of these times. In the best interest of the county, now is the time to stand strong in reducing the proposed Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Six expenditures to ensure a financially sound county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next person is Murtha Haney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. My name is Murtha Haney, and I currently serve as the Chairman of the Northumberland Board of Social Services. I serve along with Mr. Paul Carson, who's back there, Mr. Long. I've been a member of this board for four years. I have also worked closely with social services, having served as a parent representative on the CPMT and now FAP teams. Being a part of these boards has given me the opportunity to have a full picture of the entirety of what social services does for our county, as well as have a better understanding of the needs our county has. The main role of social services is to deliver vital support to vulnerable populations in our county, including children, elderly, and families in crisis. When crisis situations happen, they affect our whole community. Our board was made aware that DSS employees were previously left out of the county's salary study and realignment despite our agreement that they should be included. I am urging your support for the county to allocate matching funds to provide raises and bonuses needed for our social services employees of Northumberland County. This staff works tirelessly. As a medical provider in our community that sees a predominantly senior population, the adult and child protective service workers are crucial to the safety of those members of our county. Also, as an employer, I know firsthand how hard it is to find dedicated staff to work part-time or full-time. But these workers are on call twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week on a rotating basis, and find themselves often in situations that are not so pleasant. Many of these employees are local to our community, born and raised, and choose to stay in Northumberland County despite the ability to have higher salaries for the same work in other parts of the state. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, in twenty-twenty-four, the average employee stays in a job for four point one years. It takes nearly two years to train a social worker and have them experienced enough to work out in the field on their own. Rising cost of living combined with stagnant wages make it hard for any employees to stay motivated when doing work such as the social services employees do, that contributes to our community well-being. This includes assisting community partners with reducing crime, homelessness, domestic violence, child abuse, and neglect, along with elderly abuse and neglect. We need the best and brightest to deal with these situations when they arise, and supporting them financially is a step in making our community a better place. I will just reiterate the numbers that were given to us, the board. For the employee bonuses, the DSS state allocation received by Northumberland DSS includes eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars for the one point five percent bonus authorized to the employees. We only need three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars in local dollars to honor this bonus. For raises, the DSS state allocation received by Northumberland DSS includes twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars for the three percent raise authorized to the employees. We only need five thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars in local dollars. Northumberland DSS will have to return the monies to the state if the bonus and or raises are not given. That will be approximately forty thousand dollars returned to the state instead of distributed to employees as intended. We only need nine thousand dollars in local dollars to make this happen. And please note that the DSS proposed budget only increased by one thousand dollars in local dollars for the entire year. It seems counterintuitive to return forty thousand dollars to the state to only save nine thousand dollars in local dollars. In conclusion, allocating matching county funds to raise social service employees' salaries is a vital step toward building and supporting a strong, effective workforce that meets our community's needs. By investing in these essential employees, we make a vital investment in the safety, health, and future of our community. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet, but anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak?
Maurice Johnson, four fifty-one Timberline Drive, Reedville. I need to kind of echo a little bit of what the sheriff was just talking about. Couple of years ago, this board here asked the county to go back and find savings because they were having a problem with the school's budget. And those folks throughout the county, heavy on Chief Balderson and Sheriff Beecham, came up with two point one million dollars in savings. The very following month, this board gave one point eight million dollars to the schools. That's a problem for all kinds of obvious reasons, but it's been going on for a long time. I'm sure everybody here knows. And the problem is, is that the healing needs to start, the economic healing needs to start. I don't want to have to dial nine-one-one someday and have to wait forty minutes for somebody to show up because we couldn't afford to pay for it. I don't want to have to call nine-one-one looking for law enforcement and have to wait until after somebody shoots someone because we couldn't pay for it. So the pain is there. The budget on the school side has been growing at an unhealthy pace for many years. I can't even think about all the ones and zeros and all the line items and all, no, it's not where I'm coming from. It's just been going on long enough that I don't need to dive down that rabbit hole right now. Some damage has been done, and we need to figure out how to do some healing. Couple of suggestions have been made this evening. We need to get that person hired tomorrow. Anyways, that's, that's it. We can't sit there and keep robbing from the services that we absolutely need in order to pay for the deficiencies that were brought on by an ineffective school board for years. Unfortunately, Mr. Curran wasn't around back then. So. I know it's a tough place to be in because you got to balance what the needs are, not wants, we're talking needs, and what the budget can actually provide. It's not a great place to be in, and I don't think you guys are there yet tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello, board. My name is Tanya Henry, and I live at one-one-two Pebble Road in Heathville, Virginia. I am also an employee at the Northumberland Department of Social Service, been there for twenty-five years. I am here not only as an employee, but as a resident of this county and went to school in Northumberland as well, graduated in nineteen eighty-seven. With the school, the budget, we really need to take a look at that. It's very hurtful as being an employee. In their budget, they want a five percent raise, and they may not cut that. That's what their board decided to give them. Our board with the state wants to give us a raise, but you all are telling us we cannot get a raise. We, it is very hurtful being as a resident and a county employee, and you all just overlook other county employees. So I just want to advocate for I am Northumberland County employees as well, not just the school, but the whole county, because we work very hard. Like I stated, I've been there for twenty-five years. The pandemic, we work hard, and we're still working hard. The school, they get, they, of course, they deserve their breaks. We work twelve months, and we work hard for the citizens of this county, young, old, everyone. So I just want to put on the record, I feel as the whole county with our raises, and as you stated, what Ms. Haney stated, we only need that nine thousand dollars for our raises. So I'm here to advocate for that, being as an employee and a resident of this county, because I pay taxes as well. Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak on the county budget? All right, would anyone that's online tonight like to speak about the county budget? How to raise the hand? Anyone that's online tonight like to speak about the county budget? All right. Since we have no one else that wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ted Luck, how much raise did we give employees last year?
It was across the board, it was three percent. And with some variations for different departments, but overall it was three percent.
Three percent, okay.
Everybody got it.
Everybody got a raise last year.
Okay. Year before?
I would have to go back and look.
I probably.
We, we can get the information for you.
Yeah.
It was three and two because they, they did the, the comp board did that two percent bonus mid-year. So it was three and then two.
Okay.
And same for the health insurance.
We'll confirm that.
Everybody gets, employee gets health insurance. We've always stated that if one group gets pay increases, everybody gets pay increases.
We've tried, we've tried to do that, yes, sir.
And haven't we also picked up the additional cost of health insurance for employees?
For quite a few years, we have picked up the additional health insurance cost, yes, sir.
That's, everybody gets a raise that way, too. It's not, it's not that we're not trying to look for everybody. We want everybody to get a raise. It's, I just don't know what we'll be able to do this year. It's very difficult. I'm not saying we will or we won't, but we're going to try to look at everybody if it's any way possible.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Dr. Leslie a question?
Yes.
Dr. Leslie, I, I believe I heard you correctly in saying that you had cut around seven hundred thousand. Did that? Of course, the Board of Supervisors has no control or emphasis on the raise for the school teachers. Did your cuts include a salary increase?
So that. So the budget that I cut seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand off of still included the original five percent raise.
Still included it.
Seven hundred, that was cut from other areas and not cut from compensate.
So without that raise, you could cut a whole lot more.
So.
It's another seven.
Several different incremental raise amounts.
I believe last year, we asked the school board what it costs for a raise, and they said around six hundred and eighty thousand, if I remember correctly. I think we ended up giving them seven hundred right off the top of the budget so that make sure the teachers would get a raise. But of course, keeping in mind, everybody got a raise, all schooling, all county employees got a raise. And I, I think we need to be fair and just with all county employees.
And I agree.
Right.
All county employees. One gets it, they should hold it.
I don't, I don't think, you know, one group should get, get a raise and the others not. And we need to really take a harder look at this budget and see where we're at. It's like Mr. Haney said, I'm not saying that we're not going to give them, not saying we are. But whatever this board does, it's going to be fair across.
Going to be fair, amen.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we must, we must be fair. We, we can't give three percent to one and five to the other.
No.
Or whatever it is, that is just totally unfair.
Can I ask a question of the school board also?
Yes.
Could someone from the school board explain what the governor has done specifically for bonuses and raises at the school division?
So the, there are a couple of different pieces, so. And we actually have our proposal, but tonight was not the appropriate night for the request. So there were bonuses given for what are called SOQ positions, which are standard of quality positions. And that money is given to us. It has actually come through on an EDI transfer. And the school board had voted to allocate those raises, so we will request a special appropriation from the board to allocate those. Initially, we had wanted to request additional friends from the county, but that is not a palatable thing at the moment. So we reduced the amount of those raises so that we could spread it across all of our SOQ employees. And so if we receive, if we are allowed to do that based on the Board of Supervisors, then we would be able to provide those raises. There is no county match for those raised money. And I filed the paperwork, so essentially, we can use the money to give those raises or we give it back, but we are not asking for any local contribution, not raises, excuse me, I'm sorry, bonuses, my mistake.
That's a, that's a one-time.
That's a one-time, yes, mhm. It's a one-time thing that was offered. And like I said, it has come through on the EDI, so we've seen it through there. So the three percent raise that the governor was discussing was over twenty-four, twenty-five with a one point five. Believe it was October, I haven't looked at it recently, I believe, October, had to give portion by October of twenty-twenty-four, another portion by, I believe it was June or July of twenty-twenty-five, without looking at it. It's not required, but it certainly is recommended. So that is where we are in that. And I did include, as I had said, and Mr. Fisher asked, you know, I did make several budgets with several different possible percentages if the board could see its way to allow raises for the teachers, and I understand what you said on the twenty-first. So I did create a budget with that five percent raise intact, but of course, I did also create budgets with a three percent or a one point two five percent and what those numbers might look like so that we could get a better picture.
So the SOQ, that's an acronym for standard of.
Standard of quality. So there are standards of quality for the school division, and essentially, it will say for every certain number of students, you have to have one principal or such and such number of English teachers and things of that nature. So we do have more instructional employees at the schools than the SOQs require. I will also say that that is common because the SOQs are sort of the bare minimum. So when the governor put the raise out, it was a thousand dollars per employee for the SOQ, but we, of course, have numbers, we have more employees than the SOQs would require. So we wouldn't say, well, this teacher will get it and this teacher will not. Instead, we would split the difference and say, well, we'll, we'll give both something. And that amount was somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred dollars per employee that we would be able to do, and I have all the math broken out on that. But as I said, this wasn't an evening that I was going to come and present that information, so.
So the SOQ money would just go to educators, is it?
It just goes, right, so in the past, my understanding is that has been given to everyone. When I broke it down, I broke it down for our instructional faculty that are in buildings and our administrative assistants in the buildings, library media specialists in the buildings, principals in the building. So I took out, you know, nutrition, any executive staff, any executive level administrators, operations and maintenance and transportation, we didn't, they're not covered under the SOQs. So it stuck with the staff that supported instruction within the building.
So the way the governor handed down, there, there are several positions that would not be included.
Say that again?
The way the governor has passed that down, it's only the.
So the, yeah, the actual, the verbiage is for SOQ employees. And so like I said, in order to spread it around a little bit, it was easiest to look at, okay, everybody who's directly responsible with that, with those instructional duties on a daily basis for our students.
All right, any have a question? All right, any other questions? Ma'am? It's past time, but I, I will allow you make a comment.
Good evening. Shelby Brooks, um, Cone Harbor, um, Lottsburg, Virginia. Many of you all know me. I worked for the county for more than 10 years as a school teacher. I chose to leave last year because I felt it was better for me personally. And I felt it was better because I saw many things that I felt needed to change, and I felt I could have a better voice not being an employee here. I've sat in many meetings watching you all online, not here, because I work outside the county now. Um, I'm going to speak for all county employees. I don't care if you are in social services, you're in the school system, you're in emergency services. Every county employee deserves a raise. We have a lot of healing, I agree. Um, that is not going to be quick. It's going to take a while. But this county and this board need to come up with at least, even if it's a small raise, a raise for our employees. They work hard for us, and I have to tell you, I agree with the sheriff. You are liable to lose employees. I'm not trying to be a scare tactic. But one of the reasons I financially decided to leave this county is because I get paid a lot more where I went. And I only went one county up, and it's only a 25-minute drive for me. I am getting close to retirement, so I have to think about how many years I have left and what my VRS is going to look like. And it is very hard not just to replace school employees today, but it's starting to get hard to replace county employees because county employees look at what other counties make. As a county employee for Westmoreland County, I got a very modest raise. Actually, it's a pretty good raise. I got a 3%. I have no complaints over that. But if you do not give a raise, you are going to take and widen the gap of what the salaries are. And there's already a gap in the salary. I'm living proof of that. So I know you all are in a tight situation. I'm a county employee, I mean, a county resident. I own two properties in this county, so I'm going to be hit by the increase, but I know we need the increase. I would have supported increase last year. You know, death and taxes, that's the two guarantees in this world along with, you know, my, this is what my grandparents and my parents, death and taxes, and also Jesus Christ coming back. That's the three things that was drilled into me as a kid.
Amen.
Okay? So I want to support our county employees. And I'm going to tell you, I've called the sheriff's office more than once, and they are fantastic. And the EMS have come. Not just for my family, but personally for myself. So I really want you all, and I know it's hard to go back, and I understand you want equality, but I think every employee deserves, even if you can only give them a 1.25 or 2%, let's still give them a small raise because I don't want that gap to get bigger, and then we're trying to make up that gap. That happened in 2008, about 2000, I think, 11 or 12. I went four years as a teacher and didn't get a raise. So I know what that's like, okay? And that's all I wanted to add, and I hope that you all understand because I have a different perspective because I'm not, I live in the county, but I don't work here now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board members, have any other comments before we move on to the next item?
All right. Mr. Chairman, if, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the board asked if there would be, as presented, uh, would we be dipping into the undesignated general fund ballot?
Yes.
Um, and that number is approximately 1.3 million dollars that you would be dipping into it.
Taking the balance to what?
Uh, remember, these are all, all estimates, um, but it would take it down to about 1.6 million, so.
It's there's no way to do the budget.
All right. You have a comments, questions from board?
Yeah.
And considering this budget, what is the, uh, plan to build this contingency fund back up? That's going to be within the budget. You run a budget so lean to where you don't have any year-end money left over to go back in a contingency fund and never gets built back up. So what's the plan? We got to have that plan. You can't keep taking money out of it every year. It's going to be gone. So part of the budget process this year needs to start. How are we going to put money back into the contingency fund instead of taking it up?
I suppose we need to have, um, four meetings. Need to have the meetings to pick this out. Just can't do it in one meeting.
No, sir.
Oh, no, we, we're going to have to have multiple meetings.
Yeah.
We'll have to have more, have to have multiple meetings here. And that's something we're going to have to discuss. We got a lot of things to discuss in this budget. And, um, I know it all revolves around money, but money and tax rates and all. But, uh, hopefully, we're going to be able to work this thing out. Does anybody have any other comments?
No, sir.
All right. The board members have any comments?
Jimmy, to answer your question, 26, by, by 27, it'll be about gone. We keep going the way we're going.
It'll be gone before then.
Probably, but I'm just being conservative.
I mean, it's like starting a savings account, and you start dipping into it, you don't put back in, and it's, it's going to let you down.
Be gone this year if we don't do something.
And I, and I know the two that's proposed tonight, and I know why we had to have a public hearing on these two, but I won't vote for these two.
Well, I'm thinking it can be worked out. We need to have the meetings and we can work it out, but it's got to be positive.
Yes, sir.
Be positive, and these things will be worked out. We need to set up meetings for next week or when else. The things that we have on the table can be worked out. We're just going to use our heads, have some meetings, and, uh, we don't want to lose employees. So we got to find a way to, uh, do the things that need to be done. I agree the sheriff department. We have, I know for about 10 or 12 years, we had the best school system in the world. I mean, in, in the northern neck, we had other counties transferring the kids here. You know, so, uh, these things can be corrected. We got to get our heads together, have some meetings, uh, take some suggestions, and make sure we don't lose these good employers that we have. Very important. If all the counties can do it, we can too.
All right. Is that all, Mr. Long?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments from the board? All right. And next item on the agenda is to convene in a closed meeting. Need a motion. Need a motion, Mr. Tadlock?
Need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711A1 for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. And Section 2.23711A29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditures of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms and scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invite you to attend the closed meeting as necessary of the county administrator and assistant county administrator as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia 40th Section 2.23712F.
All right, have a motion, gentlemen?
Do we amend that to include Mary possibly, or?
Yep, we can amend it.
That all right with you guys?
Can you amend that?
But can we amend that motion to include Mary tonight's closing?
All right. Yeah, that's fine.
I'll make that a motion.
Make your motion. All right. Got to have, I got a motion to have.
A second.
Got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in closed meeting. I thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank everyone that's online for coming.